Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the great great justice of all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I have one.
Recognition?
Yes, we do have a couple of recognitions this evening. We're gonna start with the McGowan Scholarship Awardies. We have one student here tonight. Sue is gonna talk about that process a little bit and introduce our guest.
Madeline, come on up here. So as the board knows, we received a very generous gift from Kathleen McGowan, and you've decided to utilize that gift in a couple of different ways. One is to support innovative teaching grants. So we have a full committee that looks at submissions and makes those decisions. And another wonderful way is that we award five scholarships each year, one to a student from each elementary school who is going into education or a related field. So it's a very busy time for our seniors, seeing that graduation is tomorrow. But Madeline is here with us today. So this is Madeline Prouza. She's attending B.C. next year, and she is our representative from Squadron Line School. Also acknowledged from Central School, Nora Walsh, who's attending St. Lawrence University. From Lattimer Lane, Libia Soucy, who's going to be attending Penn State. From Terrifield, Brianna Coxon, who's attending Wilson College. And from Toot and Hills, Lillian Richards, who will be attending Sienna College. So Madeline, thank you so much for your great leadership. And you're, again, off to B.C. And what do you hope to give?
Definitely something related to education, not quite sure yet, but something educational.
Wonderful school, wonderful opportunity. Congratulations. Thank you for coming out.
Great. Any more?
Yes, we have a couple more. We have our co-editors of the yearbook here. They're in the back. There they are. Alright, so we have Olivia and Abby. Hi. So we have a couple yearbook. I know we had a shortage this year a little bit of yearbooks, but...
Wonderful problem.
Yeah. But why don't you tell us about your kind of theme and process a little bit this year?
Alright, as you said, we're, Olivia and Abby, we're both graduating seniors this year from Simsbury High School and are co-editors for the yearbook. This year's addition for the Simsbury Pinnacle is called Snippets and Snaps, which is a Snapbook-themed creation, which we wanted to create this happy medium between having something that really represented what happened this year, but also a timeless kind of creative piece that would be able to be looked at years after graduation. So we think we were really able to achieve that this year. We had a lot of fun with it.
And through some support from our high school, we were able to go to Southern Connecticut University and create our cover there with the online design.
Any questions, comments? Thank you for coming out. Excited about tomorrow?
So excited.
Looks like some good weather.
Looks like the weather held up.
Yes.
We'll see you tomorrow night. Thank you very much. Alright, one more. Ms. Tanisha Grant. Gotta stand up. I gotta put you on the hot spot.
I don't like being on the hot spot.
I know you don't. I know. But excited to bring Tanisha Grant out tonight. Tanisha has just completed her second year with us as our open choice liaison, but she's got a very longstanding relationship with the school district, going back way back to my days at Squadron Line as principal, and Tanisha was a parent there. So, but she was honored by Crec at an event that they had as the open choice liaison of the year. So we wanted to bring her out and give her some props on that. Obviously, Tanisha is instrumental in the success of our students and our family, and works closely with Dr. Bachelor as well, and has done incredible kids for our kids on both the social-emotional side, the academic side, enhanced our communication practices with families, and just really helping to elevate and make the students in that program really truly feel a sense of belonging in the Simsbury Public Schools. This district has supported that program for a very long time in terms of participation. We have, I think, the highest number of students in that program, or second highest number of students in that program. So it's something we believe strongly in, and your work has been instrumental. And I look forward to working with you for years ahead as we continue the success for both you and our students.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming out and doing the work.
She really goes beyond.
Yes.
Her passion shows every day.
Absolutely, in a lot of different ways. So have a good night. I'm good.
Awesome.
Alright.
Public audience.
Good evening. I'm Jane McAlpine, the executive director of the Simsbury Historical Society. So first, congratulations on completing another great academic year. And I want to commend our fifth graders, fifth grade teachers, the paras, the students, and the parents who participated in Colonial Day at the Historical Society. From May 30th through June 4th, we had about 330 students come across our campus. We had a team of more than 20 volunteers, and I will tell you that the group was outstanding. Everyone left. We take surveys. We were very pleased. Everyone reported that not only did they learn something new, but they enjoyed the day. So that made us very happy. And I want to remind you, we did launch a program for Native American history last year in the fall. I'll encourage your third grade teachers to reach out to us. We worked with the Institute for American Indian Studies in Washington, Connecticut, to create a program for that age group. And again, we had good results with that, so we welcome you there. And then I know the school year is ending, but on Juneteenth, a lot of people are aware that the Historical Society is working with the town and other organizations for an amazing tribute to the Jackson family, an African-American family, with a century of service in the French-Indian War, the American Revolution, and the Civil War. So there will be a wonderful tribute and ceremony and dedication that's taking place June 19th, 10:00 a.m. at Ina Memorial Hall in collaboration with the town. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
You're the only one left in the audience.
You don't have to say it.
Katie? Let's just start with you this time.
Yeah, you're over there tonight.
It's odd.
It is odd.
Josh?
No committee updates. Would just say Henry James Middle School ceremony, graduation ceremony was very well done. So kudos to everyone that was involved in putting that on. It was very well done, very well organized.
Nothing board-related, but Squadron had their recognition ceremony today. It was also really nice, well-attended. And then the sixth grade committee threw a party for all the sixth graders at spare time, and they were generally all well-behaved. Everyone had a lot of fun.
Generally?
Generally, right.
So that's what I got to have to say.
I'm all set.
Yeah, hot off the press today, Neil Saul and I attended the CAPE Legislative Office Building, the legislative wrap-up of the entire year. So I won't bore you with 13 pages of different bills that were passed regarding education. As you know, it was a long session, but the gist of it was that the big, two big bills that were passed was the emergency grants for municipalities for SED. That was the big one that's happened all year, that $40 million bucket. And then the SED Task Force, which advocated with very positive results for us. And the other one was the SB 1520, the Act Concerning an Amendment to the Freedom of Information Act concerning education records. So there's a lot of, a lot in concern, a lot in this. I can send it to you if you're interested, but...
Liv, I'll send it out to everybody else.
You have all that, yeah.
Yeah, it's a good summary.
It's a good summary. Everything passed. We're very fortunate that we've had, you know, very good allies and our legislators, and both our legislators representing Simsbury really worked hard with us, with all the districts, and to make this happen. So this is where we are. We are looking forward, we are looking forward, always looking forward to July 1st, when some of these are going to be enacted, and October 1st. Some issues that did not pass this year were cellphone policies, because most local districts have their own, just cause and termination hearings, crisis drills, additional expenditures, antisemitism in schools, later start time, school accountability review board, homeschool students requirements, and minimum salary for teachers. So these were a lot of discussions that were ongoing right up until the last minute. They did not get into any of the bills that were passed this year, but most likely they will come back for discussion next session in January. But we were very pleased that these got passed this year, and there were no new mandates, which we really advocated at CAPE and Crec.
I don't know about that.
Well...
There's a few.
There's a few. There's a few in here, but nothing that, as in recent years, where they arbitrarily put in some of these mandates with no funding attached. So there's a few of these things embedded in here, but not to the extent as before, so...
I think what we'll do, Liv, too, is we did it a couple of years ago. I mean, there's enough here, particularly on the special education side, that we come back in the fall and do a review of some of these things, because there's quite a few things tied to like that excess cost.
Right.
The excess cost discussions we've had, new grant opportunities based on things the state plans to put out, even maybe some new staffing requirements in terms of, so when you say unfunded mandate, there are some things attached to special education that may require us to either look at positions we have or bring new positions on for support. So there's quite a bit there.
I'll say they did a nice job listening to districts about the stress of special education right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they tried to respond. There's also some other interesting potential funding that, things that I've talked about with HVAC systems and maybe some dollars, not enough detail in this packet, but I'll be interested to see usually over the summer, more detailed. There could be some relief to districts about what this board has talked a lot about with CNR and like directing some money.
Interesting things in there.
Yeah.
So I think they, I was pleasantly surprised. Normally, I dread that meeting.
Right.
But it was, I think they really did listen.
And plus, because we had a changeover in the legislative and general assembly, too. But I think this year, the big piece was the special education. And the legislators that had been there, even the new legislators in the Ed Committee, you know, really listened to us this year. We testified, and a lot of us testified really on behalf of the SED pieces on here. And then there were some other pieces in there, but this is the first time that they really paid attention to the dire need, you know, thank you to, you know, to CAPS and HASSLE and CAPE and Crec and everything about the dire need for the SED that's going on within the state, within the state, within the state, within districts. So there's quite a bit that's in there, so we will just move forward and see come July 1st and October 1st, when all these take effect. And then again, as I said, before you know it, it will be January. They'll be back in session. It'll be a short session next year, but a lot of these issues will be coming back to the table to be looked at again, so...
Sure.
Yes, I do. So I think I missed the last board meeting, but I'm gonna take us back a couple of weeks and just say that I, in all the years I've been on the board, was able to attend the art show this year. And I just have to say to the families, to the students, and even to us as a board, what we have in this room is only a snip of what you see. And I'm getting chills again, but from going and walking and seeing what our students put out from that art show, I mean, it's worth it to put it on your calendar desk. It's taken me five years to finally be able to do that, but I...
Talking about high schools here?
I am certainly talking about the high school. And the thing about it is it, it's even right now I get chills, because when you walk around, I mean, the kids are expressing themselves through their art, and you just get to see what they're... Some of them are handling and them having to get through high school. And so I just ask you to please put it on your calendar, alright? And I'm just glad that I was able to go, alright? I wasn't here to say it a couple of weeks ago. Other than that, I'm glad that the weather's holding up for tomorrow with graduation, and, you know, congratulations to all our students that will be leaving us to go on to do great things.
Absolutely. Thank you.
One thing that I heard from a couple of kids today that I ran into were they got to walk through the elementary schools in their caps and gowns. Today was a big day, so that's a really fun, fun thing.
When did they start that? A couple of years ago?
Couple of years ago. It was brilliant. It's really, it was really fun. The kid, oh yeah.
See all the pictures cut out of the print of those pages? It's really cool.
Last day tomorrow for students, an early dismissal reminder for families.
Yes, Josh has been updating you from the Communications Committee that we had the return of the Communicator, which is the board's sort of four-page communication brochure that is going out twice a year, and the current issue is at the printer. So as our school year ends, it will be arriving at households either like this weekend or on Monday. And so it will be in houses soon.
I'm all set, too. Just the board gets tomorrow as well.
I'm good.
Great. Thank you. So first on the agenda is the approval of the May 21st special meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from... Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention? Next up is the minutes of the May 27th meeting.
I make a motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second, great. Any discussion? I'll abstain. One abstention? All those in favor? Personnel?
Yeah, two high school educators that have submitted their resignation because they've received new opportunities in other districts. The first one is well-known to the board. Gianna Gurka has appeared before you as our culinary arts teacher. Gianna got an opportunity to do the same kind of work at Southington High, which is five minutes from her house. But she's also going to be a department supervisor for them, so it's a leadership opportunity for Gianna. And as you know, she's been tremendous, so we got big shoes to fill there. But I want to congratulate Gianna on the opportunity that she took. And Will Wesley, who's been with us for eight years as a special educator, first at Squadron Line before he transferred to the high school, is going to be the new principal of a small elementary school in Colebrook. So congratulations to Will on landing an administrative job. So the motion is there for the taking, if somebody wants to do it.
That the Board of Education accept the resignation of Gianna Gurka and William Wesley effective June 30th, 2025.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, and it was also with great regrets with Gianna leaving.
With something like that, just curious, like, so, because she was so successful in that and kind of like built that up. So on their way out, do they ever get involved in like kind of feedback on like a replacement or what would fit? Like kind of like a debrief or anything? I'm just curious.
They're invited to an exit interview with me, and I don't, I actually don't know if Gianna took up the opportunity. It's been kind of a whirlwind. This just happened at the end of last week.
Yeah, because it would seem she was just so successful in that, and it'd be good to get her thoughts on like, what made it so successful?
I will make sure I do an exit interview of that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just to see her go.
Absolutely. Ooh, absolutely.
So now you're on the hunt for a new...
New culinary arts expert. Is there a chef you know anywhere?
Yeah, I'll just pull one right out of my...
Reach out to your neighbor there, Mr. Dolm.
He did say he offered to spread the word when we have beneficial postings, so...
Let's, let's, can we, we still need to vote on it, too. All those in favor? Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think...
In your packet is the, this is the time with approval of the chairman, not chairman, the superintendent's contract. We've talked about this in executive committee. Obviously, Matt's provided us with another year of exceptional leadership. We've had a lot of significant issues, and I should say Matt and his team have had a lot of significant issues this year that we've all wrestled with. And we are clearly in a better place at the end of the year than we were at the start of the year. Not saying that we're in a bad place, just we keep getting better. This was my point. But so with that, there is the motion in your packet to formalize our conversations.
Move that the Board of Education approve the superintendent's contract for '25 through '28 with a general wage increase of 3% for '25 to, 2025 to 2026.
Second.
Any discussion? Just want to thank Matt, and again, I think we talked about the average tenure of a superintendent in Connecticut is five years or something, and we've had Matt for longer, much longer than that, and we're very lucky.
You're stuck with us, Matt.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the support.
Neil, just go back to you.
Yeah, a number of policies that we've been talking about over the last few meetings that have gone through the first and second reading process, and they are ready to be approved tonight. There was a request a few years ago to move them one at a time, so that's the way that the motions are presented. And I don't have anything more to add at this point.
Alright, I'll take it on. Move to adopt the revised policy 3240, tuition fees effective June 10, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Move to adopt the revised policy 4201.6, non-discrimination, effective June 10, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Move to adopt the revised policy 4260.5, family medical leave of absence, FMLA, effective June 10, 2025.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Move to adopt the revised policy 4900, reports of suspected abuse or neglect of children, effective June 10, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Move to adopt the revised policy 5116.1, non-discrimination students, effective June 10, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Move to adopt the revised policy 5131.912, school climate, effective June 10, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Move to adopt the new policy 5131.913, challenging behavior prevention restorative practices, effective June 10, 2025.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
And finally, move to adopt the revised policy 5133, student discipline, effective June 10, 2025.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
I will add, this is how this rolls. We just passed our revised FMLA policy. That's federal family and medical leave time. We, Lydia and I learned today that there's also Connecticut family medical leave, and that our non-certified educators are now going to be eligible for that. So more revisions to come. You finish it, and then...
Yeah, that passed.
Although I will say, there's going to be a lot less policy revision as a result of this session. There's not, not a lot came out today that's going to require policy revision. So that's my little FMLA push.
Well, I looked forward to the pre-readings.
Fiscal year authorizations.
Yes. So this is something that we do at the end of every year. Since the board typically cancels their summer meetings, there's certain authority that needs to be given to the superintendent for three items that are listed there. So first is renewing our state and federal grant applications. This is something that happens during the summer months for our grants such as IDEA, Title I, and the remainder of all of our state and federal grants. So this gives him the authority to renew those applications during the summer months. The second one related to the transfer of funds, this is something that is required for the audit. So we take certain accounts, say that there's a surplus in a supply line item, and there's a deficit in a services line item. We simply move the surplus over to the deficit line item, so everything zeroes out nicely. So that gives the authority of the superintendent to make those transfers. The budget in total does not change. It's simply line item reallocations to zero out those budgets. And then the last one there is the Board of Education typically hires during the months of July and August, and this gives the authority to the superintendent to hire teachers during those summer months.
Yeah, great.
So I make a motion. So I move that the Simsbury Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to act as the board's agent in renewing applications for state and federally funded programs.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
I make a move that the Simsbury Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to transfer funds from those accounts in which a surplus is anticipated into those accounts in which a deficit is anticipated.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Move that the superintendent, with the approval of the board chairman, be authorized to hire staff for the '25-'26 school year during the period of July and August when the board is not in session.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed?
So previously reported during the quarterlies, which I'm sure Matthew did a great job while I was away, we had anticipated a deficit of about $425,000 at the end of this fiscal year, mainly related to special education, some electricity costs. There is some savings throughout the budget that we may achieve, but if for some reason we do need to cover a deficit of $425,000, if that does come to fruition, we need a way to cover that. So right now, we would like to utilize the non-lapsing fund to be able to cover any deficit in our general fund. The fund balance in the non-lapsing is anticipated to be about $562,000. So this just gives the authority for us to utilize those non-lapsing dollars in the event that we do have a deficit in the general fund.
Move effective June 10, 2025, to authorize the use of the Board of Education non-lapsing fund up to the amount of the full year, '24-'25, year-end deficit not to exceed $562,415.69.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. So I have, just for clarity, we said that we, is a deficit position estimated to be $425,000, but we're giving the approval to use up to the full amount?
Yeah, it's just saying that you can't exceed the balance in the non-lapsing account.
But are we expecting anything?
No, we're not expecting anything.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Board of Education summer, am I taking this?
That's true.
In your packet, as always, or in keeping with past practices, we have canceled the summer meetings. So that is what's before us. Again, what I would say is don't be surprised if your very mean chairman requests a meeting in the middle of the summer, because there is just too much going on.
Well, with Vanessa's transfer to Central School, we do have an administrative vacancy. So there will have to be a special meeting at some point for that, whether people can join by Zoom or not.
So like I said, when Neil wants us to call an meeting in the summer?
But there's some capital things we definitely need to pull together on, so...
Or somebody?
That the Board of Education cancel regular board meeting scheduled on June 24th, July 8th, July 22nd, August 12th, and August 26th, 2025.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
So my question would be, we know... So my question would be, we know we're going to have a meeting, but if we call one, then it becomes a special meeting. Whereas if we kept one of these on, we wouldn't have to do a special meeting.
Yeah, but there's no problem doing a special meeting. That only means you can't edit the agenda during the meeting or talk about items.
We may want it to be a workshop too, based on the conversations we're having. So.
And there would also probably need to be an interview and also.
And with school not in session, your teachers aren't, I mean, like the scheduled meetings are great for teachers if we have to call them into the meetings. So if we're off and the teachers are off, it's, we have more flexibility in when we can meet.
And it's all going to depend on the search process for your adminis, for the administrator, for the new administrator. So we have to work from those dates backwards.
No, it's a good, it's a good question. All those in favor? Any post?
I have some news hot off the press. Girls lacrosse won 7-5. They're heading to the state championship this Sunday. So also got word earlier this week, really unbelievable, six of those girls made first team All-State from that one team.
Wow.
So impressive.
Congratulations.
They're playing Cheshire in the final.
Here or?
Sunday at Fairfield University.
That's exciting.
It's our last team that's still cranking.
That's great.
Great. With that, with that, we've come to the end of the agenda. Can we get a motion to adjourn? And just thank you all for your, this, let me just save 30 seconds. Like this has been a very tough year. We've had a lot of significant issues before us. I just want to say thanks to each and every one of you around the table for the time, the commitment to our schools, to our students, to everybody. Again, this has been a long year and I think we've done a great job, I think. So just, yeah, my undying thanks.
Thank you, everybody. Hope to see you at graduation.
I think Jen just held up her hand to make a motion.
I will, I will make that motion. But I was also thinking, could I, you know what I didn't say in the beginning part in a reminder for families is this summer library, they're still doing that program with the books, the presents and the reading stuff and they get little gifts and stuff. They do that.
The Summer Library has gone out in the list service on Friday. Yep, it's a great program.
And I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Excellent. Is there a second? Right. All those in favor? Great. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it.